Good afternoon. Returning from our short, quick recess, we will now begin Bill 113. It is now 11:38. That's Bill 113, reference to supporting the Hurra Academy Chamor language immersion preschool program. And, um... How do you put it? Good afternoon? Okay.
(speaking Chinese)
(speaking Chinese) We will begin with, let me see. What does the list look like? It's short. We'll start with you.
(speaking Chinese)
Is that easy? Is that easy?
(speaking Chinese)
(speaking Chinese)
(speaking Chinese) (speaking Chinese)
(speaking Chinese)
(speaking Chinese) (speaking Chinese)
(speaking Chinese)
(speaking Chinese)
(speaking Chinese) (speaking Chinese)
(speaking Chinese) (speaking Chinese)
(speaking Chinese)
(speaking Chinese) (speaking Chinese) (speaking Chinese) (speaking Chinese) Oh, wow. Wow, Chamor language. How about coconut?
(speaking Chinese)
Coconut cereales?
(speaking Chinese)
(speaking Chinese) Chamor language. Manzana, how do you say manzana?
(speaking Chinese)
(speaking Chinese) (speaking Chinese) (speaking Chinese) How about coconut? Wow, what's coconut? How about coconut?
(speaking Chinese)
How about coconut? Easy. Easy. Is coconut easy? Ah, here. Is coconut easy? Ah, here. Coconut, coconut.
(speaking Chinese) (speaking Chinese) (speaking Chinese) (speaking Chinese)
Anne Marie.
Buenas. Mananas, Chamor language. (speaking Chinese) 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 (speaking Chinese)
We need to go back to basics and start, and not start, but go back and teach the basics to our children so that we can create a new gen... the new generations in this gap that was lost to Western society. And so, I believe that even though as important as, you know, our visitors are to us because they create, right now, they're, they create our economy, you know, that Ma'aduzurahit, you know? We have nothing to show for as the native people of Guam, even to the visitors. What would they see? And the misconception of Polynesian and other cultures being Chamor. So, we want to celebrate our diversity, of course. We want to celebrate our diversity, of course. We're the loving people that we've always been accommodating to welcome people to join us and live among us. We've always been that, and that's the reason why we're a diverse society today. However, I'm not mixing, let's not mix that up with what we have to do as a people to give our children their native right. (speaking Chinese) (speaking Chinese) (speaking Chinese) (speaking Chinese) You know, I guess we grow in our wisdom, you know, as we, in our experience. And I think the most important thing right now is to continue with the seeds that we planted, but we cannot just leave it, no? (speaking Chinese) And so, in this sense, we need to continue to support all the cultural groups and this work of the kids, especially Chamor. (speaking Chinese) Senatora Quiquintus, Gina Munia Barnes. Chamor is four years near on support to Chief Hurra Academy. We were able to not only create the curriculum, we were able to train a cohort of teachers. We were able to implement, and this is the end product that you see from all of this funding that you helped us with. Not only have we been able to do this, but now currently, we've been able to grow and partner with Department of Chamor, with the Division of Chamor Studies at GDOE. And we coexist now on a campus with DOE wherein we are working as the immersion experienced organization with the Department of Chamor Affairs and implementing their immersion master plan. And so, we coexist and we're partners in a public-private partnership. And we're, we're located at PC Lohan. And we begin the Kinder Immersion this coming school year, August, as we speak.
Okay, I got a simple question for you. The DOE is here. The immersion program over at PC Lohan. You coexist with them?
(speaking Chinese)
Are they providing any funding?
Yes. They're the ones funding, only their part. So, we remain a nonprofit organization with the Nani Academy, which is a three and four-year-old, it's a preschool.
Why don't you, why didn't you apply for a charter school? Since you're an academy, I'm just trying to understand. I'm reading the bill. It talks about the Hawaii program. I've asked this when I was on the school board. I was talking to a bunch of principals and teachers, asking them to do the research and determine how we can start our own Chamor school.
Yes.
So, when you start, eh? And you work your way up. You're doing, you're doing the preschool. Why not be, why not be a charter school or something? You know, you gotta get off, I mean, I enjoy the nonprofit, but if you can be a funded school, then you're, then you're in the path to success. Nonprofit, you're hoping and wishing to be there. That doesn't, I, I...
We're headed there, Saina. We're actually modeling off of the Hawaiian immersion schools, which started just like Aha'pananaleo.
Right.
Was just like Chief Hurra Academy with the preschool first. And then eventually, they moved into partnering with the public schools. And so, we're modeling that. But we, we have been looking into the charter school concept. And for now, our model was just that. If this pilot year doesn't work, we're just giving it a shot. Then if it doesn't work, then we're considering the charter.
Anne Marie, the reason why I'm asking that is because the law requires that Chamor be, Chamor Studies be taught in the school, right?
(speaking Chinese)
There's funding for that. If DOE can't perform it, but Hurra can pick up the part that DOE is required to do, then you, like you said, you're part of the DOE. Then you can be part of, really, part of DOE.
Okay.
And, and, and the funding would be there automatically. Because when we fund DOE, they fund the Chamor Studies. Then it, then it becomes a requirement that when DOE says, "We want to teach Japanese, whatever the language", "Hello, Chamor has to get a, a big share of that." It can't be just the other languages.
(speaking Chinese)
Okay, so, and that's why I just asked that simple question.
(speaking Chinese) So, this year, we just happened to start with a pilot in the kindergarten to see how it goes, and then we'll grow to first, second, third grade. But on the Hurra end, as a nonprofit, we need to look at growing our Nani because that's the root, and we would be the feeder to GDOE. That's really the partnership.
Then be a charter school of, it's like the pre-K. You, you, you understand how I'm getting at? You got your preschool. Take a look at what DOE is supposed to be doing with the education of our children at the youngest age. And maybe take part, be that, that... You've been trying? Okay. Anne Marie, we need to sit down and talk about that more.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just for, uh... Just for institutional knowledge. Since the support of Hurra and its inception to try to get some kind of grant to move forward, it has been many years in the making, from legislation to requiring Chamor in all, in all the grades of school to making sure that the curriculum stands strong. For many years, the Chamor Division was always, never put at the priority in the forefront. And I'm not dissing anybody. I'm just saying that we have a lot of local people in our community who have literally taken the passion and the heart, a lot of time, with a lot of volunteer hours to try and get a program initiated. When we started to work and bridging that, it was through the idea and sometimes just working with, not the management, but with the support staff, those who really have that desire to keep the language alive. And because of that, Mr. Teria and the group in the Chamor Division and Hurra have continued to work and come together. And because of that, we have a immersion program starting. And we are also looking at having them work with additional funding sources from the National Science Foundation as it relates to public research, as it relates to education, as it relates to the identifying, identifying what is truly the Chamorals. And, and from language to the history, to the culture, to the perpetuation, to all of that in. But this has to be in, and this is the ingredient that has been missing for many years. But I'm glad to say that because I see DOE here and them and the community here wearing different hats, not just the government, but also with the volunteer side, from the nonprofit side, that they're finally coming together. And hopefully, I've been talking to Anne Marie, I've been talking to Anna, and just everybody in the industry that promotes Chamor and the Chamor culture and the history and the language and the teachings to finally come together. For many years, we were talking with the Natan and, uh, uh, Gepago. For many years, we were talking about bringing that charter school concept. So, I need you to know, Mr. Chair, that the history and the advocacy to try and bring everybody together has been working on that. The problem is finding the resources. So, we felt that if we can continue to promote that and give them the seed money, we can show that when we write for the bigger grants, that we have the government working with the nonprofit, the collaboration coming together, then taking that and working for the next step to see how we can ascertain funds to build a Chamor school, to build the Chamor, to build the training capacity and the teaching capacity. So, that's where I'm at. And I'm hoping DOE can share some of that this morning. But thank you, Mr. Chair. It's many years in the making.
And we need to speed it up. DOE, oh no, who's, who's next to speak? Anne Marie, uh... Pongentus, oh?
How today, how today, Senator San Augustine and Speaker Munia Barnes. My name is Eileen Kirigwa, and my daughter Fuuna goes to the Nani Academy. You saw her in the video. She's singing the Inefresi, singing Gap Muteri Bear. So, thank you for providing, giving me this opportunity to speak. Preserving a child's native language is critical to his or her identity, which strengthens value in their culture, contributes to the overall awareness of who they are. When a child is able to communicate in their native tongue, it bridges gaps between older generations and the new, helping them connect to their ancestors and culture in a way that nothing else can. My generation was not afforded this opportunity due to outside influences telling our parents and our grandparents that our language was not good enough or it was something to be embarrassed about, leaving my generation and the generations after me yearning for what was stolen. Now that Hurra has a Chamor immersion preschool program, we're grabbing this opportunity with both hands. The teachers at Hurra are teaching my kids what I'm unable to, which is one of the worst things that parents can say. It's not just a daycare that speaks to our kids in Chamor. It's a structured institution that incorporates the Chamor language in daily activities that extend into the home. The teachers plan the curriculum to achieve important citizenship objectives, assessing children's development and learning milestones along the way. Then there is the parental engagement, the cornerstone of the Nani Academy. And it's working with the parents to bring the curriculum into the home. No words can express how much hard work went into developing the curriculum and the dedication from the teachers and the staff. And not only they just changed the children, but they changed the entire family. My daughter has surpassed me in Chamor proficiency because of the Nani Academy. She now holds conversations in Chamor with fluent speakers like her grandparents, her aunties, her uncles, some of which are actually making an effort to increase their Chamor proficiency just to hold conversations with her. What Hurra has taught her and will continue to teach her can never be taken away by anybody. I can honestly say that the Chief Hurra Nani Academy has, through my daughter, given me a greater sense of self-identity and helped strengthen the family structure at home.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't know if we want DOE to talk, but we love you. Because I want to see money go to Hora. I mean, that's just the way, gotta get it to work.
Alfade Tatlu, Guausi, Dr. Kenneth Gofugun Cooper. In addition to political science, I also do research on language revitalization. And one of the problems that we have had here is a problem called intergenerational transmission. Simply, as Saina Anne Marie said, those who know the language aren't passing it down to their children. Hora is absolutely the opposite of that. They are a safe haven for intergenerational transmission. And that's why it's so important for them to continue to do this. The Nené Academy, the preschool immersion, this is one of a kind. This is our unique opportunity. And I know Jimmy is going to give you some numbers, but I invite you two senators to a thought experiment, right? We have the Guam Museum right behind us. And so we have two alternative futures if we don't do anything right now and in the situation that we strengthen Hora and similar programs. Imagine going to the second floor of the Guam Museum in that beautiful theater and watching a video of the last speakers. Forty years from now, 100 years from now, just film of people who used to speak this language called Chamorro. And that can be a possibility. With the numbers that Jimmy will provide, you will see that that is a possible reality for our linguistic future. It's dusty, it's gray, we watch people speak it called Manumku in a code room. The alternative, if we do something right now, is that we continue to see the language roll off the tongues of our children. So I invite you senators to spread the word and continue to be supportive of programs like this. Because those are two trajectories, two roads, and which one we follow is determined by the actions that we take today. So
Sir?
Alfade, my name is Sean Lizama, and I'm just here as a parent. And I just come to testify on behalf of Hora as a parent who has a young daughter who just started, you know, in the summer academy. And as a parent and as a Chamorro, I grew up not speaking the language, right? My father is a fluent speaker. And really, that's left kind of a hole in my soul as a Chamorro. And so, just to speak to what the Hora Academy does for children and for me and our family, is, you know, just three weeks into the academy, my daughter wakes up and the first words out of her mouth were Chamorro. And, you know, as a parent, you don't know what that means to me. And then for the possibility, you know, of a future of Guam, right? I mean, we talk about tourism, but ultimately, like tourism is still a very dependent industry, right? And as Chamoros, I believe that we can think of, you know, better ways to run our island and to support ourselves and really, truly, you know, be a people, you know, really secure in our own identity. And, you know, I'm just really grateful to Hora for everything they've done, you know? And even just that six weeks, you know, it was worth it. And it'll always be worth it. And just to know and hope for one day, you know, my daughter, for my daughter to think in Chamorro and to dream in Chamorro. And that's a gift that, you know, you can't put a price on. So I mean, that's all I have to say about what Hora does for Guam.
Thank you. Speaker, do you have anything you wanted to?
Yes, if I may, Mr. Chair, I'll make it brief. One of the questions, maybe I'd ask Dr. Cooper, if I may, and maybe Anna and Anne Marie can chime in, is, or anybody on the panel. One of the concerns that came up to me when at the introduction of the bill, and I really want your honest opinion, was that maybe the children who learn to speak Chamorro fluently at a very early age, that they would lose or lag behind those that speak the English language. I'm glad you're shaking your head, no. But they said that if we were to implement the native tongue first, and because everybody speaks English and it's a universal language, how would that affect the learning ability for those students growing up? And if I could have you, doctor, from that perspective of where you come from, but also from the executive director, because I really love you shaking your head, no, but please.
First, yeah, that's a common concern. I will just say that monolingualism is not the norm, it's the exception. Most of the world is bilingual or trilingual. But yet, that mindset has been passed down, right? It comes from a particular history of how our language was treated in the past. But my daughter is a proud Hora student. It is her first language, we raised her. She only spoke Chamorro growing up. She learned English when she was around two and a half, three years old. And she's perfectly bilingual today. Neuroscientific studies are showing that bilingualism is absolutely intellectually advantageous. And I think that that is a very, we just need to realize when we look around the world, that most of the world speaks multiple languages and it helps them, right? There are multiple studies that can show that, and I'm sure that anyone on this panel can help provide your office with a bunch of these studies. So that concern, I think, comes from a particular history of the way that our language has been treated, and to be honest, demonized. And so we absolutely have the capacity to learn multiple languages at their age, and even now, we can. We just, we're also, mantina ni, no, anigina ti, ti siña lo. Yes, we just need to recognize that. That is a common concern, but I think it absolutely is, can be demystified and is not necessarily true at all.
Anna.
I'll speak in English, so that you know I could speak two languages, and I'm perfectly fine. I shake my head because I am so blessed that my mom decided to take a chance and teach me Chamoru, you know, from the day I was born. I didn't learn to speak English until I went to school. And I never had any problems in school. If anything, I was a gate student, I was always an A student. I, you know, was at the top of my class a lot. It helped me. And sincerely, it, my heart is pounding so hard because it saddens me that that's a concern. It saddens me because I think about the rest of the world and I think about that nobody else is concerned about learning English in order to be intellectual. If you think about Europe, you think about Spain, you think about France, they all speak their own language, even just Japan, the Philippines. No one's thinking, "Oh, if I don't know English, I'm gonna be stupid." You know? I dispense that, I feel like it's a little aggressive, though I... This is something that I've carried, you know, a long time in my life, is why, why do we see it like that? You know? And that's a mindset that we need to change. And I'm 26 years old, and she took that risk 26 years ago. And people always told her, "She's gonna be dumb. She's gonna be at the front of the ESL line. She's gonna have a hard time." The same concerns that you're presenting here today. And I sit here today and I'm telling you, I don't, well, I don't think I have a problem, you know? Maybe some people think I do, but I don't. And pues, taza problema, taza problema. If anything, I know that knowing my language has instilled this identity in me, and I'm not searching for something else, you know? I watch my peers who don't know our language, and I see them hurt, and I see them, you know, they're just this pain, and it's a pain that I don't know how to describe, you know? And I don't know how to understand them because I don't feel that pain, you know? And I, so I hope, I hope that we can give this to our children so that they never have to feel that pain, so that they can sit here someday and feel the way that I do, proud and knowing who I am. Pues, if anybody's concerned, you know, ma l'akat sempre. Si juus maasi.
I'm really glad that you brought that perception into this public hearing because it is very important to understand that, that yes, everywhere around the world, people know their native tongue. And if we don't, as adults, as those that want to preserve the language, to preserve our identity, then we will lose it, and it would be a crying shame. And I had to bring that out so that our listening audience can understand that we should never, never be afraid of learning who we are, but also learning to speak our language. I am ashamed that, I am ashamed that I cannot speak my language fluently. I had asked the chairman if he could speak it, and he said, "Yes, he could, he could get by." But that his wife speaks it, writes it, and even shares it, and speaks it fluently. But it should not be just, it should be all of us. I also shared with him that, as an honorary Palawan, that the Palawan culture has instilled that you learn your language first. You learn, and everybody else, if you want to summarize in English, you can do it because we have a relationship with them. But we are all taught that we must learn who we are as island people, and we should speak our language first. So I wanted to make sure, and I want to say thank you for sharing both your perspectives because it is really, really important. And then the other question was, if the pass-throughs are having concern because of where it's being facilitated at, would the Department of Chamorro Affairs, because a lot of this is related to our culture, our history, our language, and just everything, everything about Guam, would Department of Chamorro Affairs be an agency that could facilitate the pass-throughs also? Just food for thought?
I'll answer personally. I think it'll be its natural place, to put it very simply, honget. Because we, that would be exactly our mission, is to perpetuate, to promote, to revitalize. And then that's where it would belong. But as you know, we are in the middle of a reorganization. And with the blessing of the governor and the task force that's being created, perhaps that's something the task force might be able to take on and look at. And, but with that, if the governor blesses it and the task force blesses it, I think that it'll be very natural that the Department of Chamorro Affairs, or, you know, as a heritage-driven department, and that's its sole purpose, I think it'll be a natural place for us to administer these programs or to promote, to encourage, to reinforce these programs. And so I'd just like to say for the record that, you know, as a cabinet member, I'm not here to sit to go against anything that the Guam Visitors Bureau, as my sister department, is doing. I'm just saying that if there is extra funding and this, that we should be able to support, if there should be there extra funding. Because I just been through my budget review, and I know that Senator San Augustine told me personally that he's not even sure that he's gonna reach my ceiling in my department. So I come here just with hope, and, you know, that that's all we could do. And I let the whole team know, I said, you know, so with a lot of hope that there will be a chance, and in that funding that, you know, will. So either way, I'm willing to sacrifice. If you don't reach my ceiling, I'll figure it out. But we need to support everybody here, okay? If I have to be the secretary, the AO, and the senator, I will, if we just support everybody here, Senator.
Thank you.
Si juus maasi.
Next. Next.
All right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Appreciate it.
I appreciate, my, thank you, Anne Marie. We'll see what we can figure out.
I didn't mean, Mr. Chair, to put her on a spot, but I just wanted to know that just based on that cooperation, if that could be provided.
That's okay, I enjoyed it. I saw her just two days ago, and even the DOE folks, so. Now we will move to Bill 113, 114?
114.
114, and that's the Humatak, right?
Yes. Is anybody here from Humatak?
Honget.
There is Mr. Chair Vaimai, the Mr. Joe Caneta, who's the chairman of the Humatak Community Foundation, Inc. He had every intention of being here, but he's in a hearing right now that he couldn't miss as it relates to his federal, I mean, the grant funding that he gets. So he submits a letter of support, and he talks about what the funding would do and how it would focus if it was provided to them, from the walking tours to the exhibits to the demonstrations, or the many things that happen with the activities in his village. They attached, for the record, Mr. Chair, the annual report for 2018, "A True Community-Based Organization." It talks about the Humatak Heritage Village Museum, the walking tour that literally comes alive with the do set that they share with the tourists and visitors that are not from the village to literally learn the history and everything that happens in Humatak. It also has an exhibition of the people and the history of Humatak. It has the Humatak Coral Reef ambassadors and what they've done to... and what they've done to leverage and network with other nonprofit organizations as it relates to saving our marine environment and advocating for coral reef preservation and protection, environmental conservation. And as they are part of the ambassadors with them working within the village, they also talk about the heritage youth and community archaeology. It has the Yomatak planting, tree-planting legacy, and then the Yomatak Youth Heritage Learning Exchange. And, Mr. Chair, I will submit this for the record. They have had their financial report in order, has submitted to GVB. And based on everything that has been given to them, they have received a total amount of $74,851.56. To date, their actual cash-on balance is $188.44. I submit this, sir, for the record, for committee report, and everything is in. So I just want to say, on behalf of the Yomatak Foundation, they continue to thrive, and of course, need the support also as a nonprofit for the southern village, the most southern village of Guam, Yomatak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And just for the listening audience, Yomatak was also, from the Department of Interior, they were granted $1 million to build their gym. And I am in possession of the floor plan, the whole write-up for, under the Preservation Trust, to, I guess, restore, renovate JQ Sanchez Elementary School? Or FQ, correction, FQ Sanchez? And what that's supposed to do is, was supposed to establish the charter school there, the Yomatak Museum down there, and there's two other things. I think senior citizens, there's a bunch of things that in Yomatak, they're supposed to take care of. And that's supposed to, that requires two minutes. So if you find money somewhere, we'll send it down there, and then we don't have to worry about the foundation. And I say that because if they have their own building, then they start producing, and then we won't need to fund them no more. It'll be standalone, and it's one-shot funding. But that being said, now we will, it is now 12:30, and we'll move to Bill 115, which is the Haza. So Haza folks, come on up. And if, angwagini nyalang shoma, na tibu moko. Shaka toroha, my nyalang, but that's okay. We're here for you. Haza. Kontumzu, tata haza, toro drumzu. Nam pura gidzene? No, I'm just kidding.
Kosi nia si Shauna Tetuun se po hano.
Okay. Whenever you're ready. It's 12:31, so.
Hoffe de again, just here on behalf of Haza, just briefly to testify as to the power of Chamorro medicine in our life, right? I testified earlier for Hurra Academy about my daughter attending the Tianpun Somnak. But my daughter wouldn't be here if not for Ahmet tomorrow. My wife and I, for years and years, had tried to have children. And only just by happenstance, my wife happened to be filming, you know, a documentary with them, and they were in Luta, and my wife met Tan Carmen. And Tan Carmen, you know, talked with my wife and gave her the Ahmet. And just after one use of this medicine, we were pregnant. And so really, that's my testimony is to the power, you know, and the potential power of Chamorro medicine to help our society. Guam, you know, with a lot of infertility problems and things like that. You just don't know the ancient wisdom that the land holds and the plants hold, right? And, you know, it's stuff that needs to be supported and funded. Thank you.
Thank you. Whichever you want to be next.
Did you need to go?
You're in control of that one. Just please, just make sure you state your name, okay? So, because it's all being recorded. Thank you.
Buenas en hoffe de, Guahusi Darlene Sanchez. And I am a proud apprentice of the Haza Foundation. Dispenses at Nyalangzut. So I'll try to keep this one short because I don't feel as if I'm the only one that's hungry. Okay, so I am a proud apprentice of the Haza Foundation. I have learned the significance of our traditional practices of healing, and I've learned the significance of the Chamorro culture and the other, from the other islands around us. This importance has been shared with my children. They participated in the Panexay Haza, which was held here on Guam for this year. And it had a very positive impact on them, and I believe it is something that should be shared with all of the children of Guam. I have learned the importance of the land and the sea, and the importance of the people to the land and the sea. Our zu'amtis have taught us this importance. Saina John has taught us how to fish and the importance of respecting our waters, which is something that I've never learned before. Mama Chai and Saina Lu, they have taught us the importance of the land and how respecting the land is basically respecting yourself. Everything we need, everything our people need, is currently in our land, and it's in our seas. Most of all, my family and I have learned the importance of promoting and preserving the Chamorro culture through respect, love, understanding, and spirituality. The Haza Foundation has showed me the importance of preserving our lands, waters, and our culture, the importance of sharing this knowledge with our children, the importance of our traditional healing practices, and the importance of the Chamorro people to our island. The Panexay Haza, which is something that the Haza Foundation has facilitated here on Guam, has showed my children the importance of respect. Respect of your elders, respect of your land, respect of yourself, mostly. And that's something that I feel is lacking in our generations to come, is we're not teaching them respect anymore. And it showed them the importance of preserving their culture and the importance of knowing what's going on. And like, the importance of living in Guam, living in the now. So when the kids from Rota came in, and they were integrated with the kids from Guam, it made my kids super grateful. Like, they hear, like, just little stories of how, like, a can of soda is, like, too some in Rota because there's not that many people to, like, come in. But it's, but what it showed them was that they didn't need things like that. That everything they needed is with their people, and everything they needed is in their lands. So basically, everything they need is within their hands. The Haza Foundation has showed me that the importance of the healing practices is finding different ways to heal. And it's not just the importance of the Chamorro healing practices. It's the importance of acknowledging the cultures that surround us. You know, Guam is only 40% Chamorro now, and it's nice to know that we have other islands here that can help us teach different ways of healing. Right now, we're learning massage from Auntie Betty, and she's Panapian. And it was very nice to understand the Panapian culture as well, and that there's more that links us together than just the waters that surround us. Sis, this is my seat.
Thank you. Mungao?
I'll go ahead and start. Buenas zen hoffe de. I stayed up all night trying to put something together because that's how much time we have. We've got so many things going on. But I come before you today as president of Haza Foundation to thank you all for the consideration of providing us funds in Bill 115. However, before I share my comments on this bill, I would like to update you with our latest accomplishments and plans. This year marks Haza's Cultural Heritage Preservation Foundation's 15th year. Our mission is to enhance the well-being of our people. Our indigenous healing tradition has sustained our people for over 3,500 years. We have been focused on revitalizing our indigenous healing tradition given the health crisis, the epidemic with noncommunicable diseases, and suicide epidemic. This is at the forefront of our minds. We are losing too many people. Our people are killing themselves. That should be at the forefront of all our minds. None of our work would be possible without the assistance of Imenzo'amtis, Di Fontu Emilio Azuzu, Rosalia Mama Chai Mateo, Francis Meno, Susan Uggan, Betty Malakai, John Tetauta, Lourdes Mingloña, Jalita Calvo, Donald Mendola, Tomas Guellofaring, Manny Borja, and many more healers from Guam and the CNMI. Our work has always been guided by our clients, as well as our educators, researchers, apprentices, legislators, volunteers, and participants at our Ahmet conferences and programs. For the first 10 years of our existence, we did not seek money nor ask for money. We focused on meeting and developing relationships with our healers, learning that, what the practice and what it entails. We had our own fundraisers and worked for our funds to travel throughout the CNMI, attend gatherings, and hosted healers here on Guam for conferences. We've been collaborating closely with the CNMI, then initiated the first Ahmet Conference in 2012 to gather our healers for the first time in history. Sorry, I lost my place. To gather our healers for the first time in history to discuss our strategies as a people to improve the health and well-being of our people. For too long, we depend on the government or rely on government and everyone else, but this had to be a strategy developed by we, the people. A report on the state of our health was presented by the public health officials. Our healers, who were present, have sustained and sustained our people, had shared their perspectives and beliefs. However, it was quite evident that our indigenous healing tradition is still at risk. A lot of our traditional knowledge has already been lost with many healers who have passed. Since our 2012 Ahmet Conference, we have lost 12 healers. It was at our first Ahmet Conference where our community came together, rolled up our sleeves, and developed our strategies to improve our health by revitalizing and promoting this tradition. We started to lay the groundwork, and through community outreach, always going to every opportunity and making opportunities happen for workshops, publications, documentaries, piloting programs, and just community outreach. Fast forward to this first five years. Now, more than ever, the urgency and the huge risk of losing our indigenous healing tradition is still here. In some of our traditions, people are trying to reconstruct. We have a chance. We still have a very short time. Our zu'amtis and I have been devoting our time fully to Haza's work. It's been our passion and our commitment. We do this out of love and passion. None of us receive a salary. We are all volunteers. In 2016, we opened Guam's first traditional healing center, Guma zu'amtis. We also chaired the Traditional Healing Discipline for Festback and hosted 13 countries at our center. During this gathering, it was greeted by all the healers to form the Pacific Indigenous Healers Consortium, to support each other, to support all countries in the Pacific, to preserve, promote, and support our indigenous healing tradition. In 2017, and in alignment, again, with our strategic plan, we offered a course at the university. I had the opportunity to teach with our healers an Ahmet class at the university with 18 students. In fiscal year 2018, Haza received $85,000 from the GVB TAF funds. I've submitted a report on this. I'd like to share the return on your investment from those funds. With those funds, we utilized to host the Ahmet Pre-Conference Institute in Rota, as well as the third Ahmet Conference in January 2018. In addition, the funds helped us with the renovation project for our Guma zu'amtis in Agit and all the repairs we had to do at Saginaw Katura and Chamorro. With the opening of our Guma zu'amtis, we have served 9,596 clients in the last three years. Our greatest challenge for the past three years with that facility, the awnings and several canopies at Guma zu'amtis at Saginaw Katura were damaged by the storms or just heavy winds. We had to purchase several canopies in the past two years. While many would ask us to host events at our workshops, we would always be at the mercy of the weather and the lack of electricity at our site. Our plea was for help for our facility was finally heated by the Agit Mayor Kevin Susuiko, who provided a space and officially opened our Agit Center March 1, 2019. Joyonya Mayor Jesse Blas also followed suit and gave us a facility, which we renovated, opening the Joyonya Center on March 17. So in all, we have three Guma zu'amtis now on the island. Our efforts to promote continues to grow with the number seeking. Mama Chai asked to be excused today since she has many clients with quite serious issues she's seeing today. As a matter of fact, she not only couldn't make it today, she declined a fully free trip with her granddaughter this summer because of her many clients. Her client load has steadily increased. In the past six months, she has served a total of 1,982 clients, operating only four hours a day, five days a week, and sees an average of 17 clients a day. In regards to return, many, most of Mama Chai's clients are those who have not seen improvement from their medical doctors and go about desperate for help. Many young parents are also consistently bringing their children to see her. If we were to factor even half the cost of a doctor's visit per client to Mama Chai, what kind of savings would that be? We didn't have the time to contact her clients to come down to support this legislation. I'd like to also note that we get, in terms of visitors industry, we get clients visiting from China, Russia, Taiwan, Korea, Philippines, and other country. Traditional healing is receiving global attention, and people are wanting and desiring services from them. In response to the resolution adopted during our third Ahmet Conference and the high incidence of suicide, our strategy was, go na p'arad zan spia fama guan. We need to reach our young kids, who are now most vulnerable to suicide and all these other noncommunicable diseases. It was recommended that we reconnect our youth, and so with the help of our Kaohua Haza Council of Elders in Rota, we designed, developed, and sponsored the first Panexay Haza, a four-week youth summer cultural immersion program in Rota. This was funded by the TAF funds. Please know that this program was intended to help reconnect our youth, and by then, and with our elders watching and guiding, all were immersed in our traditions and practices. We had a total of 13 participants from Guam, Rota, and Tinian. I'm sorry I'm not able to print out the pictures and all the incredible testimonials from the students that attended, but they became family. Funds were also used to support the operations with materials, supplies, and equipment as outlined in our attach. I hope to one day figure out how we are making our difference in our youth's lives by reconnecting them to their identity. With regards to return, shortly after Panexay Haza, the CNMI saw the onslaught of typhoon mangut and utu. To reflect our cultural practices and traditions, we initiated typhoon relief efforts to our sisters and brothers in Rota and the relieving and recovery efforts to Tinian from October 2018 all the way through February 2019. We were able to move almost 200,000 pounds of goods to Tinian to include seeds, soil, and supplies to start gardening after the typhoon. They had no recourse whenever all the planes were flying over them, and they have countlessly thanked us, countless, for providing support to them during their hour of need. With the opening of the two new Guma zu'amtis, we initiated discussions with Master Healer Lourdes Mingloña. we initiated discussions with Master Healer Lourdes Minglornia, who knows over two hundred recipes of Ahmet, the only one throughout the Marianas to please come back and train and develop apprentices to support our centers. Lu agreed to travel to Guam at no cost to us to pilot our Ahmet Apprenticeship Program. We received twenty applicants and admitted only ten to start our program this year. The instructors of the program and the participants have deemed the program a success in reconnecting them to who they are and the value of the land and the water to them. But I was very Mamalo because in our tradition, we don't let our visitor and our healer pay for anything. But she did because we didn't have anything. Also in March, we received notification of approval of our two-year request to Board of Sagan Katura in Tomorrow to use Guma Tress to develop it and now create our Guma Para Hinemlu. This house is to be used for training, education, and development of all our apprentices and workshops that were always asked for, but we never had the facility for. Renovations for this house is estimated to cost seventy-seven thousand dollars. On my birthday, I invited everyone to come and help, clean, bring supplies, bring food, because we had no money, and they all came and stepped up. Since then, we have been able to get it to a functional, a bit functional, but much more needs to be done to include the windows, the flooring, the windows and the flooring, and kitchen and fixtures to make the Ahmet. In June of this year, like I said, we haven't rested. In June of this year, we had our second Penexai Haza, youth immersion and hosted fourteen participants from Rota, nine from Guam. This was only made possible by creative, resourceful people and by the grace of God because all these kids stayed twenty-four seven in the facility and we served them. We are working nonstop to take advantage of the resources available when they come because we will not have these expertise anytime we want. This month, we are so grateful that we have with us some UCLA research students working with us in focusing and honing in on suicide because this, our tradition has ways and we know ways. We're not looking to reduce suicide. We're looking for zero suicide. We are also nearing the completion of our third documentary entitled "Community of Believers", which includes testimonials by people who believe and have experienced healing for our ZOAMTI. We believe it is making a difference with the growing number and demands for our ZOAMTI's. I'm pleading to you now because our time is very short. Like I said, we lost twelve healers in three years. We have lost a lot and we need to capture and learn what we can from the healers we have today, as well as the healers throughout the Pacific. We all work hard and to accomplish what we have. I have presented you, before you, as volunteers. No one in our organization gets paid a dime. I was quite disturbed that the amount of forty thousand dollars in Bill 115 is actually forty-five thousand less than what was appropriated in fiscal year 18. While I was made to understand about the physical, current financial constraints of the government, I was made aware of increases with other groups and status quo for others. So if our work and all that work that we have produced, delivered, served, is not of that great value, I can't help but wonder how the amounts were determined. We come before you because this momentum is going so fast and we can't stop now. We are maxed out. My friend here used her whole Home Depot credit card to renovate and maxed it out. We don't have money. Because of all the work I have shared with you, I've had not the time nor the resources to focus fully on fundraising. We have been concentrating on the needs and demands and it is not my desire to take away from any other organization, but time is of the essence for us. Our healers are passing. We have clocked in thousands of volunteer hours and come before you to ask you to amend that proposal to please give us at least the eighty-five, if not a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're not going to be asking this amount all the time. I tell you, we don't come before you to ask money when we don't need it, but this is the time. And I'm going to look to ask you to put another budget for fiscal year 19 because once we get our solid foundation down, we are forming, we have a strategy to develop a cooperative. Our healers stand by tradition, they don't charge fees. So we are establishing a cooperative to be able to solidly support this. We are on our way, but now we need this. We didn't ask you for ten years. We're asking you now. This is desperate. Sito is mase.
He's begging him. What was that amount you said? It's forty and you want it, you're asking for how much, fifty?
A hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty. Eighty or a hundred and fifty, right?
Eighty-five at the minimum, but really because of the apprenticeship that's going, it has to go. And the renovation on that house and all the workshops that we can be conducting, we're stripped. We're just like hanging by the thread of, yeah.
Understand.
Yeah.
We'll see. She's, the speaker's busy telling me. Come on.
Thank you.
Ma'am, I'm going to say the same statement I said earlier for everybody. We'll take a look at what's there and we try to give everybody what we can give them.
Yes.
I can't promise anything because it's just a matter of, it's like the Home Depot card, you know? It's how much you can only swipe and then after that it's like, hold on, just make a payment, then we'll see how much is left. So, and I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah. Senator, the only thing I'm asking, the reason why, because like I said, I didn't come here for ten years and we were really just, we didn't want to bother. We wanted, we have used our hands and done everything. And the only reason is right now, if we don't keep up the momentum, things will drop and you'll have to be reconstructing. So when you're considering this, it's not that I don't think anyone else is more important, but this is health crisis. This is our suicide. This is, this is trying to keep the education and the perpetuation of something that can turn around the health and wellness of our people. So I understand and I'm not trying to take away, but this is our critical moment and I'm here grovelling and begging because it is that moment.
Thank you. Anybody else going to speak? If not the speaker, oh, you're going to speak. The Home Depot card, hold it.
I'm Pauline Antalan Pangalinen. I came on board with Haza. I'm sorry. Come in. I'm going to pull it this way. How's that? Bend it down, I'm a little short. There you go. Okay, so I have it right in my throat. So Chairman Sinagustin and Speaker Munya Barnes, thank you for this opportunity. I came on board, not with a Home Depot card, so please let me clarify. No, 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 I know I teased back, but I just want to let you know that I believe in the Haza Foundation's mission of promoting wellness for all our people. This is not, you know, not to take anything away from anyone else. This is in the fabric of our beings. This is in our villages. This is in our, the way we connect with our people. This is how we heal. And so I'm asking you to understand the sheer numbers that come before Haza, before our ZOAMTI, not Surhanus, our ZOAMTI, who are saying, "Help us, please. The numbers are immense." We are in the process of training apprentices. This is a very first cohort. We are growing in leaps and bounds and we thank our mayors and we thank Sagan Katura for the homes that we have there and for a place of learning. We have established most recently, Guma Para Hinemlu. And you know the translation, right? It's a home for healing, for wellness. This is not just mixing medicine and putting it down the throat or applying a palli to something. This goes deeper and beyond that. This is healing the souls, the bodies, the minds of our people, connecting them with all that we've always had through generations. We're talking language, we're talking healing. So if we're going to be assigning and ascribing funding for any particular nonprofit, think about the missions before us. We are now faced, and I speak to you from this place, I worked as a volunteer. I've worked as a volunteer to put together Guma Para Hinemlu. And I spent two months with my hands immersed in paint and dirt. And I said, "This has purpose. This has importance in our, on our island for our people." I envision, and we all envision, a place where we can all come to heal. And I'm not talking just healing, you know, topically. We're talking cancer survivors, people undergoing cancer treatment, people who are suicidal and need the touch, need the connection, need the importance of knowing that their lives are important, that their forefathers, their people who have hurt themselves, have been hurting, can also reach out to them through our spirits, through our ancestors, through our ZOAMTI, and help to heal this. So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not talking about a Home Depot credit card. I put that out lovingly and willingly because I see purpose in this and I see, I see the way forward. I see Haza. So I'm asking you to look at our budget, consider how these centers in the villages, traditional yet untraditional, bringing the healers to the people, having them accessible to everyone. That's untraditional, but it's very progressive. And moreover, it gives everyone else an alternative to Western medicine. I speak on behalf of our people. I speak for them, asking you to understand our mission and come with us, come with us on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And you keep repeating the Home Depot. I apologize for that.
I am going to nail that on the head.
No, no, no ma'am. I got a Home Depot card and if you need help, let me know and we'll help you, okay? But I'm only concerned about, you're not trying to compare with anybody, so let's not. Let's not state that anymore because I don't expect to hear that from anybody else because I have to look at everyone. And I understand where you're coming from. Like I said in the very beginning, I support every one of you. But realistically, we need to know where the money's at. How much funding is available? I looked at forty, you're saying one fifty, eighty-five. I got to take a look at what exists in the budget, what's available. It's not about knowing what it is. I know about medicine, I know about healing. We're the same age, okay? So don't, I know what's going on out there. All I'm saying is, when it comes to, who do we reduce? Who do we increase? And we got to take a look what's available, okay? So we want to support you. There's enough senators here that will support every one of you. So, you know, the numbers change from forty to eighty, eighty-five, a hundred and fifty, even if it went up to two hundred thousand. At the end of the day, we would have to take a look and says, okay, how much money is available so that we can help everyone? You got the Ahmet, you got the education. The next one is the Ahmet farm, where the next one's, we're going to go down the line. Everybody, it's a vicious circle. We have to help everybody because it takes care of everybody. You can talk about the ZOAMTI. I'll tell you what, if the guy don't believe in it or the girl don't believe in it, you'll never get them in there. Okay, so at the end of the day, I want to help you. Okay, and then we'll move from there. Madam Speaker, you have something you want to say before we move to the next bill?
Yes, I do. And as I see the panel up here, I want to say thank you for giving me this opportunity. To the Chairperson, Marie, thank you so, I mean, Zeke, thank you so very much. You can't begin to understand what I believe the importance is for the ZOAMTI and the years, and I'm going to continue to commit. Like the Chair said, maybe can't make the promise, but commit to find the resources to help all the nonprofits because every single one of them is critical. We talked about the cultural practices, we talked about the healing. We talked, but more importantly, the healing for me has been very spirit. Mr. Lazama spoke about the aspect of being thought about how this could help bring a child to life and because of our medicine, that a lot of people don't understand, has come to the forefront and made a believer out of him as a young man. And let me tell you, that's what's been forgotten. And I was going to ask you about that breakdown. I was going to ask you if that presentation that you have, if you can share that, a hard copy to me to make it easier for me to delineate why it's important that the hundred and fifty thousand that is needed is because you said time is of the essence, then let us, let us as policymakers look to see where we can identify because I see the importance. Even having you going out there to working with all the nonprofits, trying to get the grants, trying to see what you have done, never asking for money. Before, I want to say that I asked you to work on this. I asked you to give me this presentation because the listening audience needs to understand the criticalness of why this is so important. And as he is the money man that I need to work with, he is stuck between having to make it, to give to everybody, maybe not the whole thing, but the majority to the majority of the nonprofits that are out there helping the government of Guam. So we get creative in this. As we spoke in the previous NPOs that have spoke and have said and shared what they've done to work with other grants, to work with leveraging their support with other organizations, you've done the same. You're working with the mayor's office, you're working with the policymakers, you're working with the business community who's giving you, you're working with the practitioners who never charge, you're working with the volunteers. I'm telling you, it is a gift that I am so grateful for and I take this to heart. And yes, if I can give you the hundred and fifty thousand, I will. And if I can continue to get you funding every year so this does not stop, you're going to get it. You're going to get it from me and I'm going to continue to work with you because Zeke, I see the work that everybody's done. But more importantly, the attention of bringing our younger generation on this renaissance. Mr. Guzman talked about the product and the essence of Guam. This is what we need to do. And though it is painful to go through this process, you need to know that I am, we are listening. And as hard as it gets because it's having to choose who we give more or less to, not always easy. But because you've shared that perspective with me, I want to ask you for a hard copy because I want to make sure that the delineation is there so that when we are looking at what we can make arrangements to, then we give those that the work needs to be done today because I know that you're on a timeline. And I know that even with the support that you've done to ask for additional grants, there are other opportunities that we can work, even to build that facility. I know that there is an organization from the United States that says if you can incorporate the education component, the engineering, the science, the math, and all that in, they want to work with us. If you can work the component of public research or educational research, that is all included. And that's where we're going to continue to drive and move forward on. I say this to you because the work cannot stop. You guys have given from your hearts. You guys continue. And Zeta, I am here to support you a hundred percent. I want to, I'm going to make it a point to make sure that everybody here, including you, at the request of the hundred and fifty, you, at the request of the hundred and fifty, I'm gonna find hard to make sure, even if I have to scruff and buff the whole budget plan, working with our colleague, I'm going to make it a point that I'm in his ear every second saying that this needs it today because the project is happening now. It's not gonna happen tomorrow, it's happening today. The building is happening now. You need, the same way we initiated the funding for other nonprofits, please, please don't get frustrated with us. I need you to know that I, we are going to help you. And I know that several, my colleague was here, the committee on rules chair was here earlier, sharing the same concerns, saying, "Why don't these nonprofits get the funding that they're having?" You are right, you did have more funding the last time and it's my mistake. I will take fault for that. Please know that you did receive that and that was only the startup. But I believe in your program, I believe in the Zoanthis, and I believe that it is you guys that are making, that are making our children learn. And that will never be forgotten because of the work that you do. Please take that and stand proud because I can't do it. And no matter how much I want to try, the position that you've allowed me to be in, I need your help to do the work and let me help you find that money. I've had numerous conversations with you and I said, "I will continue to try." But in my eyes here in this policymaking body, I will work with my colleagues and he, the chairman has a big heart, it's just having to shuffle from point A to point B. But we are going to work really, really hard. Please know that. I did want to ask you, in the past, based on the last couple of years, because you're on, you are on building, I mean, program number three as it relates to the villages and the mayors, right?
We have four facilities now.
Four, great. One in Aggett.
Jotna.
Jotna.
And two at Sagan Kuthura and Chamor.
And were any of them in relation to working closely with Guam Housing Urban Renewal Authority, any of that Gura Housing?
Not right now. We, yeah, we have, we have been just so, doing it all on our own.
Right.
Now.
So the buildings, the facilities that you have right now?
We renovated it all on our own.
No, yeah, no, no, but who owns the original facilities? Is it the mayors or is it the?
The mayors.
So the mayors have been very supportive in the efforts, right? So I want to say thank you. So but is that, that's still a government facility, right?
Is this.
Yeah, so we're still utilizing that. So it's still part of the government of Guam inventory?
Right.
And you guys have been the ones who have been taking it up and working it and following it through and the renovations there. And I understand you also said that you have business community support, right? You had, based on the programs that you were doing, the events that you were doing?
We had a thousand here, a thousand there, and then some gave us in-kind supplies. So that's what has happened.
To help you.
Yeah. And then the volunteers to do the work.
To do that. And like you said, all of that is volunteers. So I will continue to work with you, I will continue to work and pushing this forward. But I also want to share with you that I think there's an opportunity for even a greater, for greater resources to come this way and make it more permanent for you. And I'm hoping that, Mr. Chair, if I may, just based on me talking to a lot of the nonprofit organizations, it was about seeing how we can take the next step besides the little that the government is giving, but take it into a higher level to get not just the US government grants, but look for private funds and even international grants that are out there to support preservation of Chamor and culture and teaching. So please know that it's there.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just a short comment. We, you're receiving a letter of support from Australia, there's all these other international groups that we have been collaborating with. And so, yeah, our work is being watched closely throughout globally because we are very unique and they're looking to learn from us. But the, I'd like to, you know, I'm really grateful for the intent and the desire to help us, but I really did note, you know, in terms of your efforts, I really did note that in, when we compared all the different bills and all the nonprofit organizations, Haza got the biggest hit after all our work.
And I want to apologize again, that wasn't intentional. There is another bill, which was one fifty-three, that would have carried over all the amounts that was requested for the previous year. And mind you, I was not in the thirty-fourth and I have to apologize for that publicly.
That hurt.
Yes. And I know it hurt, it wasn't meant, but there is another bill that we, it's not before us right now, but because it is a part of the germaneness of what is happening with the separation based on the standing rules, that all the bills, because it's a different organization, that they had to be separate, there, at the request of the Oversight Chair, there, it was asked to consolidate all the bills because the Public Law thirty-four-one-one-six includes all of that. So we're trying to bring it up to those levels. But again, it's just getting the resources there and it wasn't meant. And again, I will take full responsibility for that and realize that I know how important this organization is and the work that you're doing today and the international work that they're watching us. We have to make this successful and I'm committed to that. Please know that, that we, as the thirty-fifth Guam Legislature, will find, to help find the resources.
We have, I know time is of the essence. We have one speaker that I'd really like to bring out, she's from UCLA, if she can speak.
You can speak, but hold on. Zeta, I need to know, you mentioned four building, government buildings you're using?
Two under the Chamor Land Trust with Sagan Kuthura and Chamor, and then Aggett and Jotna.
Are the mayor's facilities.
It's the mayor's facilities.
And you have one in Jotna and one in Aggett?
Yes.
And the Aggett and Jotna is mayor's?
Susuiko and Siessi Blas.
No, but it's a government building.
Yes.
And you had to fix it?
Yeah.
And you're where the mayors get money to fix their buildings, right?
Well, this one.
I just want to make that statement. I'm looking at the budget.
Yeah.
When we give agencies money to fix up their buildings and they're gonna pass it off to anybody, it should have been, it should have went to you clean.
It was, I'm sorry, our renovation was specific to making it, worked towards healing to, for them to use, you know, like the rooms.
I'm just trying to be very careful because when you say you got a building, it's a government building.
Yes.
It's structured the way it's supposed to be, right?
Right, it was.
The government funds to keep that building, structure sound.
Yes.
Okay, and I just wanted to make sure because I'm very curious now, on how much funding you guys required to put into it?
Yeah. It was primarily the massage, you know, keeping it, yeah.
Zeta, if it's a three-bedroom house, doesn't matter, it's a three-bedroom house, the government should have kept it up, it should have been cleaned, it should have been fixed, so you could have used it. So I'm only concerned is that when you put money into something that the government's already paying for, I'm just wondering, okay, just understand what it come from. You can't justify any further massage, but a bedroom's a bedroom. If you want to, you can do whatever you want with it, but I'm just concerned when the government has money to make sure it's a good bedroom for your massages or whatever, should have been done.
The treatment rooms.
Okay? Ma'am, you speak? Just turn on the mic, please, and just state your name. Thank you.
My name is Kathleen Carpusa, I'm a UCLA student and Haza Foundation has graciously invited us to work with them for the second year. And I just wanted to emphasize for you to support Haza's Foundation's request for funding as we see that these aunties here in front of you are cultural heroes in supporting Chamor identity and culture. Second, the second point that I wanted to make is, as part of the guests here from UCLA, we are helping Haza find a way for, to address suicide here in Guam. And we just wanted to make sure that, we want to secure our roles here to address the elimination of suicide in Guam. So just keeping this testimony short, and again, I urge you to support their efforts to preserve and address suicide here in Guam. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Last one. I just wanted to show my support. I've been volunteering with Haza Foundation since last year and I always.
Could you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Shantae Kitichu. I've always been a part of, I always feel welcome whenever I was there supporting and helping with the Gumas. And Haza Foundation not only preserves Chamor culture, but it also brings it back alive. And with all the westernization Guam faces, Haza has made me feel more culturally grounded and more connected to my roots and making me want to go back to traditional ways of food and agriculture and healing. And, you know, I've always had this hole in my heart, but I feel like Haza really brought that out, brought that, that filled the void in my heart because of the, as I put, Ammud Apprenticeship Program. I was one of the first ones to be in it. And we focused on learning more about Ammud and traditional healing to help our people of Guam. And it made me feel like I'm doing something great for the community and our island because I hope to be able to treat our people in the future when our Zoanthis are no longer here with us and to help them overcome physical, mental and spiritual ailments because we're so high on diabetes and substance abuse and suicide and there's so many negative social issues that we face in our island, but Haza Foundation has helped me, want to strive to help eliminate those issues. And to do, to do that is for more Ammud and more, more healing. And I'm so blessed to be a part of this organization that has helped me find my cultural identity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
My name is Tekpat, I'm coming also from UCLA. My nations are Nawa, Kokopan, Chalagi in the mainland. So I humbly am here as a relative and a guest on your territories. I just wanted to underscore the importance of traditional healing and the way I've seen it in my territories and how it relates to here. I think the main thing that gets passed down to our children and our youth is intergenerational traumas. And we see that a lot, like they were talking about suicide and drug addiction, drug abuse, that kind of stuff. But the thing that Haza is doing is passing on those intergenerational wisdoms. And so I really want to emphasize the important work that they're doing. It's being seen worldwide and I will take this back to my communities and share this knowledge as well. But again, thank you and, yeah.
Thank you. That being the last speaker, thank you very much for your participation in Bill one one five. It's now one twenty. We will now move to Bill one-one-six, which is on the Ammud Tauto Tano, and I don't think they're present, but I know they're.
They will, they will have the report submitted.
They'll have an.
Report submitted.
Okay, testimony submitted. So move to Bill one-one-seven, which is the.
Tasi.
Tasi?
Tasi, Tasi.
Tasi. Yeah, the traditional.
Are you here for both? Yeah, she'll do both.
Which is, which is the both? Both is which one?
Uh, Tasi and Tasa.
Tasi and Tasi, you do both, right? All right, ma'am. Which one you gonna speak about first? For both, right? But you're gonna talk about Tasi first?
Tasi.
They're associated to each other, right? Okay, thank you.
Yes. Buenos. Madam Speaker, Honorable Senator, thank you for having us. My name is Sandra Izakio Kada. I am the current president of Traditions Affirming Our Seafaring Ancestry, Inc., DBA Tasa. With me is our vice president, Vicente Guellu Rosario, and my daughter, Reina, who is the youngest voyager as she did voyages with us this year. So all three of us are active voyagers as well. So I try to keep this as brief because I know many of us have been here since nine o'clock this morning. And just as an overview of what Tasa, to understand Tasa and what we do, an overview is understanding our seafaring heritage. Approximately three thousand five hundred years ago, our brave seafaring ancestors set sail against the wind and into the sun, into the unknown abyss of the Pacific Ocean. They set sail in hand-carved wooden canoes, with propulsion made possible with wind caught in hand-woven pandas as sails. Our masterful navigators were guided by an ancient knowledge of celestial navigation using the stars at night and currents, birds, fish and clouds by day. With this single historical event, the initial human settlement of the Marianas Archipelago began. Tasa is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization and was founded and organized by spirited fervor, with spirited fervor to honor our brave seafaring ancestors and incorporated with the core mission to celebrate and strengthen Chamor identity through the revival and practice of her seafaring traditions. Our efforts in achieving our mission has been furthered as Tasa was entrusted with the authorized use and care of the canoe house located at Paseo de Suzana by Mr. Manny Duanez and the Guam Fishermen's Cooperative Board. Tasa, since 2018, has been actively maintaining and refurbishing the Tasi canoe house and Tasi sacred vessels, as well as with Tasa sacred vessels, they're currently housed under the hut. It required an investment for supplies and for, to repair the hut and for canoe repairs while creating educational opportunities for our members and our community. With the successful improvements and repairs, Tasa began hosting Cultural Heritage Evenings every Wednesday to showcase our efforts to revive our ancient seafaring traditions and showcase our rich cultural practices, including our brothers, the Achomedianas slingers, and demonstrations, canoe carving, talking circles, traditional cuisine. And then we invite our community and visitors alike to share this with us. One of the highlights of the past year since 2018 is that the University of Guam Sea Grant Program funded the Traditional Navigation and Climate Change Adaptation Course, starting in spring of 2018, instructed by Master Navigator Paulo Larry Rigatol of WAGI.org from Yap State. They continued again with that success in the spring of 2019. Classes were regularly held at the canoe hut and in conjunction with Tasa's activities and programs. Through this collective effort, Tasa members, students and the community were provided with instruction from lashing techniques, celestial navigation, voyaging, including safety of riding a canoe at sea, sailing without a mast, sheet techniques and ancient chants, along with traditional navigation and this realm, this what is known as the secret sacred realm of traditional navigation. There's also the concept of, of healing, like you have to have the chant, you have to know the healing, there's massages, all of this is incorporated, it's part of a system. So when we talk about voyagers and being seafarers, you gotta see the bigger system of what goes into it. It's not only identifying trees and it's the labor of harvesting and the techniques of carving and lashing. It includes everything from being able to recognize your Ammud, your leaves, it's being able to understand medicinal massage as well, especially when they're out on the canoe and out on long voyages and no help is near. So it's to kind of show that there's so much more to when we say voyagers or seafarers. It's part of this huge traditional and ancient system. One of the main focuses of Tasa is, of course, voyaging because you cannot be, call yourself seafarers or voyages, voyagers, if you only talk about it on land. We are, we conducted our third annual training voyage this year. We did the first one in 2017 with our. We did the first one in 2017 with our newly completed Sakmen that went from Guam to Saipan, while returning, stopping in Luta to Guam. Our second annual training voyage was in 2018, and that was navigated by Grand Master Navigator Ali Aliar and two abled Voyagers from Lamatrek Island. This voyage departed Guam on May 13th, returning successfully on May 27th. Our third annual training voyage occurred this year on June 1st. Unfortunately, with climate change issues and weather, we were not able to actually make the destination. However, we still want to stress that for Voyagers, the success of a voyage is never its destination. The success of the voyage is returning all crew members safely back to land, which is what was accomplished. And in the process, these are the challenges when we go out for these training voyages, it's these challenges that we face and the unknown that we face that makes us, that trains us and makes us better Voyagers. Because without being able to experience these challenges and thunder and lightning and this current and being able to know how to respond and make repairs at sea, if it was always a perfect weather and perfect voyage, we learn nothing. Because you actually, you have to practice it, you have to be out there in the elements, you have to live it to learn it. And that's how we're able to teach it and build a strong sense of pride in our, in our heritage and our sense of seafaring identity. Aside from our training voyages, we have been very active with outreach and educational workshops, working with the Guam Humanities Taking Root Environment and Culture Class, where we met with 30 medical students, 30 middle school students. We've also worked with Guam Humanities on the, um, the conference that highlighted the results of the Taking Root Summer Camp. We've worked with them on the Waterways Exhibit at the museum, and most recently, meeting with the, the riding students for the I Come From Here Riding Project. We spent many hours with Yogi Sociology Phil School students and the Yogi Cultural Heritage students as well. Next week, we will have three days with the Youth of the Sanctuary. And by late September, October, we've been invited by the Indigenous Affairs CNMI Office of Tinian to voyage and present, I'll be presenting to elementary and middle school students during their Taga Festivals, festivities week. Along with that, we've worked closely and partnered with Guampedia.org. Guampedia has also published, was the first place to publish electronically, our Chamor Seafaring Lexicon. And we are very pleased that Tasa was able to produce the first written Chamor star chart. And anyone sitting behind us can actually see the Chamor star chart on the back of our t-shirts. So we're actively creating and trying to find the words, the terminology. We've lost so much, there is so much that we don't have written, of course, because we were an oral society. So we spent many years, starting in 2009, making an extra effort to develop a seafaring lexicon, which allows us to relearn celestial navigation in not English or someone else's language, but in our own language and Chamor. Chamor parts for the canoe are important as well. Along, so with Guampedia, we've also partnered with them, and they have launched the Micronesians' Milestones Project, which highlights the cultural heritage of not only us in the Marianas, but throughout our region, throughout Micronesia, to elevate the, the strength and identity of being a very ancient seafaring people. In law, in line with that effort, to become more actively involved in, in the promotion of our heritage to our tourism industry, Tasa appointed and enrolled me as a member of Patam Micronesia. And at the last triannual meeting in December, I was appointed Cultural Heritage and Environment Vice Chair. I feel that's important because as GVB points out, how critical tourism is to us and how critical it is to all of our nonprofit groups. But the balance has to be made, it's really critical that, you know, we can fix roads and clean the bathrooms, but if you don't elevate the, the identity and the heritage of the people of your destination, then something is definitely lacking. So I've taken an extra role to have a voice on, on this, on this body that promotes tourism, to remind them that we are such a unique people, we're not just about World War II history, there, there, we're such an ancient people. So along with trying to provide and taking an active role in this Patam Micronesia group, it's also allowed us to, to elevate their awareness and all of our islands that we are a very, very unique seafaring people. Aside from our very active harvesting and canoe carving projects, we're always at the canoe house at Paseo. Again, that was a Tasi canoe house and is the Tasi canoes that we have taken guardianship of and that we have taken over the maintenance and, as well of Tasi and Tasa canoes. For upcoming, we see a vision that we're in serious need of three additional traditional sailing canoes of a Duduli size. The Duduli sized sailing vessels are much smaller than our Sakmen, much easier to move. This will allow us to create a more active youth program, and we have a vision of having youth races, sailing races out on Estegania and at Paseo. It'll also provide us an opportunity to provide tourists with rides and really elevate the canoe house to a, a center of daily cultural heritage activities. We did find that we are in serious need of constructing a new Sakmen. An open voyaging canoe with at least 32 feet has become very important to us. And of course, we're, we're always looking at needing to upgrade our safety equipment and supplies. Another very recent project that we've been trying to undertake is called the Mangan-Luta Lazik Project. Mangan-Luta in Carolinian in Lamatrek, Mangan is pandanus and Luta, but they never knew what that meant when I spoke to the, our Master Navigator. He didn't realize Luta was Rota. I had known from Paulo Manny Sical, who was my first teacher, that the pandanus of Luta is the prized pandanus for all the voyaging islands for making and weaving sails. We were actually attempting to do this in FestPAC 2016, but we were not able to complete it. Tasa does have in our possession two 100 feet, so over 200 feet of woven pandanus Mangan-Luta rolls. When I had initially spoke to our master carver, I couldn't find anyone on Guam that actually knows how to weave a sailing, a pandanus sail for voyaging. So we've had this and we've talked to many of our outer islanders, and we found that Lamatrek, who actually displayed one of their sails, and it's been on a world tour. So we've been working with the Master Navigator from Lamatrek, whose family was the last to possess this skill. The project that we're hoping to undertake will allow us to, to learn and teach this very specific weaving technique for sailing the sails for voyaging canoes. That we hope we'll be able to exhibit during either FestPAC, it will be used for the 2021 Galleon that is attempting to, we anticipate will be on Guam in 2021. We also have the World Slinging Championships coming up in 2021, and we're hoping in coordination with these events that we would be hosting a mini canoe, invite all our Voyagers on Micronesia, and host the first canoe festival on Guam. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sandra. And I, I just want to say, as you gave the litany of things that Tasa is working with, and of course, working closely with Tasi, the question I wanted to ask was, I know that in the beginning of time, Tasi and Tasa were really one, and then there was a separation, am I right?
There's two, and then now we're back to one.
Yes, and there's, and, 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 and those two have not reconciled yet.
Oh, yeah, no, we, we worked very closely together.
But they're still separated entities?
They're, they're separate on paper. And that's all. Only on paper. But we've always worked closely in the last couple of years with Frank, with the president, and of course, Naš we lost last year, which was a deep... Unfortunately, because of those losses, and I believe a death in the family, they haven't been as active.
Okay.
So we've, we've continued to work and communicate, and we are just doing it as, as Seafarers.
Yes, so you've stepped up to the plate to assist.
Yes.
Okay.
And to keep their canoes, you know, maintained and to, so yeah, we're in very close communication. Frank Cruz is probably the last very active member. Dr. Cunningham?
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak?
All right, sir. See you.
You can get to Rota for, in nine hours, or you can get to Rota in five days. So it's a, it's a very spatial knowledge, very unpredictable, and we want to make sure that all our Voyagers really know what are they actually doing. And it's not getting to the next island, it's make sure we come back safe, yeah.
Thank you. Ma'am, if you can, if you can submit written testimony for the two, just so we can, so we can have a copy of that, okay? Appreciate it. You're, the Voyager doesn't want to speak? Okay. She's like, "Not today." Okay. Well, that, well, this completes then Bill 117 and 118, and that will fill the operations of the Tasi and Tasa. It is now 140...
My name is Vince Rages, I sit as the Executive Director for Inenungue Pogu. I know that all the groups and all the, all the nonprofits said they're going to make it short, and I know by now everyone is manyalan tolu. So we'll, we'll try to make it as short, but at the same time, I want to make sure that, that all our members here that have made the time to come here also have a chance to speak and discuss with you a little bit about the program. I, I think our record speaks for itself as far as what we do. As you all know, we just returned from a trip to Europe where we promoted Guam for an entire month, from France, Belgium, Croatia, and Slovenia. So I think we're still kind of jet lagged, we just returned on Friday, and we still have a show tonight at the Sheraton and at the Outrigger. So I'm just going to kind of briefly talk a little bit, and then I'm going to have them speak. You know, when we first started 19 years ago, we didn't, I, I didn't, I didn't really know, I have a platform of what I wanted to do. All I knew was that there was a uniqueness of our island that needed to be preserved, and not only preserved, but educated and perpetuated, so that we can continue to have a lasting imprint and that our culture stands the test of time. And I wanted to show a different level of artistry and something outside of what others have been seeing. And basically, because I'm from Malesu, I wanted to share those stories of my family and the people that are down there, and also be able to facilitate and operate a platform for all of our younger generation to find their identity. Since then, 19 years, and now we're going into our 20 years, we've, we've, we've traveled to 27 countries around the world, all and most of them through the expense of the, of our simple fundraisers, from car washes to bake sales, and of course, through TAF funding that has helped us to sustain the program. We have reached markets that have been as far as Brazil to places like Croatia and Slovenia. Just last year alone, in 2018, we performed and competed in the Chionan World Dance Festival, where we placed third in the world, reaching millions of Koreans. So if we're talking about the Destination and Development Grant or Tourist Attraction Fund, I believe that what we do in Inenungue Pogu, we, we develop the product for tourism to be attracted, tourists to be attracted, and what that product is, is these, these young folks today. They are, they are the perpetuators of our culture, but they are also the promoters of our culture. So they, they come, they come and they provide, and they, they not only promote our island, but they, but they have an intrinsic value, so they bring our heart to our, to the people that we touch everywhere. And, and so last year, not only did we provide an opportunity for us to travel to Korea and promote, but we also brought 100 delegates as part of our third International Folk Dance Festival to Guam, places like, these guys were willing to come from Argentina, Mexico, Philippines, Costa Rica, and Finland. And through the hard work of our Board of Directors, and also through, through many of our sponsors and many of the people that we've worked closely with, we're able to provide meaningful opportunities for this, for this delegation to be here. So, and I really, and I know that in the past, the TAF funding has helped us tremendously, but I wanted just to reassure you and that the Tourist Attraction Fund, that we are the products of your Tourist Attraction Fund. We, not only do we go out and promote the island, but here we are, we also, we also find ways to promote the island here. We have been the only and full Chamor, first full Chamor dinner show for 12 years at Sheraton, 12 years, and still the only and first Chamor dinner show. We are now at the Outrigger Hotel for five years. And so we continue to not only perpetuate our culture and tourism, our tourism industry outside of Guam, but also here as well. So I'm going to go ahead and let them talk, because already everyone's very hungry, and I know that our, our listening is very limited right now. So I'm going to go ahead and move on to, to these guys, who'd like to talk? Okay, go.
Hafadi, my name is Thomas Benavensi. I'm from the village of Talafofu. I am 18 years old, and I recently graduated from high school, and I've been dancing for Inenungue Pogu for almost four, five years now. And I started my freshman year, and since then, this group has opened up many opportunities for us as a group. Not only do we get to share, share and showcase our island's culture through song and dance, but we also get to keep our culture alive. This group gives me opportunities, gives us opportunities to experience and travel the world, meet new people, and learn about their cultures. And I'm very proud to be representing Guam and perpetuating our island's culture as much as we can. I also get to see many beautiful countries and places along the way. I would like to thank my signer, Mr. Vince Rages, for opening these opportunities for us and helping us save our culture and teaching us along the way. Sidoos Masi.
Whoever's next, feel free. You're all there, you all, you do this off-island, so you should be good here.
Hello, my name is Jreska Camacho. I'm 17, and I come from Southern High School Senior. I've been dancing in, I've been dancing since I was seven, but I've been dancing in IG, in Inenungue Pogu since I was 12 years old. And I've been performing at Outrigger and Sheraton since I was 14. And I've been saving up all the money I've been dancing for in two years until I turned 16, and I was finally able to go on trips with Inenungue Pogu off-island. And all the money I've saved up in those two years allowed me to go on these trips without much hassle. But some kids aren't as lucky as I am to have that extra two years to build up money, so they would have to fundraise a lot. And the trips that we go to are very prestigious, a lot of them, because of our director is Chairman of Fedoff. So they expect really highly of us, also like expensive costumes and, also, you know, the, the only thing we have to pay for is the ticket, because the festivals that, that invite us pay for our meals every day. But just the ticket alone is very expensive, and it takes us about, like, maybe six months in advance to get us to keep fundraising for. in advance to get us to keep fundraising for. And the last trip I went on was Europe, and that trip, I didn't have the extra money that I saved up for two years. So, I experienced all the fundraising that I had to do, and that was very difficult and hard, but it was worth it, because the trips we went on very opens up our minds to the different cultures and countries that we visit. And when they see us dancing, they see us in a different perspective of us being an island. Also, when we bring groups to Guam, we have to... At this young age, we shouldn't be having to worry about all the expenses that come with our group bringing in different countries to perform a folklore festival. But our latest folklore festival was one of our biggest, probably our biggest, because we had so many countries come. And it was a great experience, and it was very difficult to go through, but it was worth it at the end, because it was very fun. And being in this group allows me to think of my future and the future of most of us dancers, how we would like to be in the tourism industry, and how we would like to work in schools. And a lot of what happens in this group is very inspirational of what I want to be in the tourism industry, such as how we dance for hotel shows, and we see that part of our job. And, yeah, so I just want to work in the tourism industry when I get over. Thank you.
Thank you. You're next.
Okay. Hafadee, my name is Janice Lozama. I've been in Inetun Gepagu for seven years and counting. I started as a freshman in high school. I am 20 years old. By the time I was a sophomore, I had the opportunity to get experience, work experience, by performing at the Tramor Dinner Shows at Sheraton. And up to this day, I still have the same opportunity, and many others have the same opportunity, to work at Sheraton and Outrigger and get paid for it. In 2017, I went on my very first Europe tour, to Spain, Turkey, Bulgaria, and London, where I had the opportunity to represent Guam with another dance member in a solo duet competition, and we placed third out of 24 countries. So, up to the very last day before leaving on tour, my family and I had a car wash to help pay for the funds, because I was still lacking to go to the tour. And I couldn't have done it without our board members, because they really helped me with raising those funds. With every trip and tour, raising the funds do not get any easier, but going off-island to represent Guam and hearing things like this, just this tour, one of the members from another group, another country, I'm going to quote it, because it's really, I just really liked this one. He said, "I do not have to come to Guam to know how beautiful it is, or to know how kind the people are. Just by watching your performance, I can feel the warmth of Guam." And when I was told that, that's why we do what we do, because that feeling where you know that you're bringing those people on Guam without physically bringing them to Guam is one of the best feelings that we can ever experience. And coming home after the tour, we only get more eager and more excited to promote and perpetuate our culture to the best of our ability.
Does anybody else want to speak? Okay.
Hafadee, my name is Dana Payet. I'm from Zarnia. I'm 18 years old. I just graduated, and I've been dancing with Inetun Gepagu for about a year. I'm kind of the youngest out of the dancers. And this group has given me a lot of opportunities to go off-island, like, all of them, but my experience, in my opinion, is kind of crazier, because when I first went into the group, I went in on a competition, the Korea competition. I mean, I'm like, I'm not special, but the fact that they opened their hearts to me and trusted me enough to go with them on that trip, they weren't saying, "No, you haven't been dancing." I've never danced with any other group either, and I've never danced, and like, just the desire to dance is what kind of drove me to dance with them, and I hope that, and I hope that I keep dancing with them for a long time. But when we go off-island, all the other countries, I see that their cultures are so prominent, and then I think, I'm like, "Wow, I wish ours was like that." But then I hop on a stage, and I'm dancing to Tramor music, and I'm perpetuating the culture, and then I think, is it really dying? Is it... I don't, it doesn't strike my mind that it's dying anymore. It makes me feel like I'm keeping it alive, and I'm an ambassador for the culture. And, yeah, I didn't really plan what I was going to say, but come from the heart.
Okay, thank you. Okay, last one.
Hafadee, hafadee. My name is Kiana Tunkap. I am 22 years old, and I've been in Inetun Gepagu as a musician for six years. Inetun Gepagu has helped me become the person I am today, which is someone who is eager and willing to teach those after me, with everything that I've embraced in this group through experience and through opportunity, from Tramor songs, chants, dances, as well as our traditions, customs, and most especially, our language. During my participation in Inetun Gepagu, I've seen the group give kids, high school students, and also myself at the time, a safe haven to discover who they are or who they might want to be. The group also helps at-risk kids by providing dance, songwriting workshops, tunas, patlitas, prop-making workshops that are available during after-school hours. And those workshops are usually run by students themselves. I'm proud to say that Inetun Gepagu is one of the very, very few Tramor dinner shows that exist here on Guam. The group is currently at the Sheraton and Outrigger Guam Beach Resort. With that being said, we're able to provide some kind of stability for high schoolers and those who are old enough to work in the performing arts or tourism industry. Everything we do and how we make things happen, it's always a communal effort, from training and discipline to making sure we're representing Guam in the most righteous way and everything else in between. So, with proper funding or any kind of funding, and with your support, I know that it'll only help us achieve the things we write about on paper or talk about during monthly meetings, and it will allow us to better what we already have. Thank you.
I got only one simple question. On your trip, who pays? They pay for their own ticket? Turn on.
Yes, they pay for their own ticket. We give them a budget. This last one, they paid $2,800 each, which came up to about $44,000 total. But each one of the members that do go, they pay their own way, $2,800. But a lot of times, what they do use, because we have Sheraton and we do have, they're able to use some of their funds from there to help. But because we don't have any TAF funding this year, we couldn't help them in any way.
Yes.
Yeah, so...
So, in other words, if you've gotten, if you receive what's on the bill, $25,000, you would have been offset their expenses.
Yes. $25,000 helps with their costumes, it helps with their props, and even, because they have to still, we still have to pay for our own props, again.
Okay.
And so, yeah, $25,000. Sometimes it can be as simple as $2,000 can really go a long way, because it helps them with the meal, like, for example, today, right? They found their rides here, they stayed here for six hours, and now we're going to go find a way to make them eat, right? So, that's where certain things, and we selflessly give that way. But then, I think, yeah, we do $2,500, and that's just, that's just if they decide they travel, because there's many people that can't travel. And the whole purpose of traveling, not just to go out there, but what do we bring back? What do we learn, so that when we come back, we elevate the level of artistry, we elevate the level, they become more worldly, and therefore, making worldly decisions that help our community.
Okay. I was just concerned about the cost for travel, because...
Yeah.
I view it as you're the ambassadors of Guam, you're dancing, you're representing Guam. And I'm just surprised that you have to go out there and fundraise to represent us, the people of Guam. There's something missing there. Okay? Speaker, do you have anything you want to ask?
Thank you. I just want to thank them for being here and being very patient, and to share your mandate, your vision, to promote and perpetuate who we are as island people. And I want to thank you for the many years that you continue to promote Guam to the rest of the world. So, sido smasi.
Hafadee, speaker, you've been a great voice for us and advocate for us since we first started 19 years ago. Can you believe it? We 20 years. And I remember going to you and requesting for some funding to go to New Zealand, and this was one of our first big trips. And you have continued to assist us, and now you see the benefit of your support, and you continue. You're going to continue to see it, as long as we're able to, as long as we're still doing what we're doing, you'll continue to see us trying to figure out our way and do our part to perpetuate and promote our culture.
Sido smasi. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now proceed to, we have two bills left, 121 and 122. It's Humanities here? So, we'll proceed to Humanities, then. That's Bill 121. Okay, 121. It is now 202, and Bill 121.
And I'll speak for the three bills.
Okay, no problem.
I'll speak for the three bills, just to make sure it's properly written.
Yeah. Ma'am, state your name, press, turn on, make sure the light's on red, and state your name, and please.
Speaker Munya Barnes and Chairman Sinagastin. I am Bernice Santiago. I'm a program coordinator for Humanities Guam, and I'm joined here today by Nadine Sangani, our other program coordinator, and by our board members, Maria Lozama, our vice chair, and our board member Beth Perez. Dr. Kimberly Keeling, our executive director, she regrets that she's not able to be here today. She's at a board meeting for the Federation of State Humanities Councils off-island, but she sends her regards and her apologies. So, Humanities Guam, we present and support public humanities programs for our community, and we foster community engagement, we celebrate diversity, we encourage critical thinking, and we enrich lives through these programs. And we thank you so much for your support, for our past half-funding and for your support in general. Thank you. So, for fiscal year 2018, we are current with our reporting, and those funds have been used in part for our Taking Root program, Growing Youth Empowerment for Island Sustainability. And that was our three-week immersion camp for public middle school students on island, followed by four months of community action plans with those kids. They generated their own projects, and we mentored them and supported them. They had their own ideas about how to improve our communities, improve our lives here, and they presented them to other public middle school students at a big conference that we had, and we're so grateful that we had support for that. And those funds have also been used for Mother Read, which Nadine here will speak about in a second. So, going forward, we are going to be presenting our fourth Eat Your Heritage Tour. So, it is a program that is based on the connections between food and culture and our environment. And we are bringing out some special guest chefs, and we will be having programs leading up to that big event that involve farm tours and film and discussion, and culinary workshops for our students in ProStar and in high schools and HGCC, and we're very excited about that. We will also be working on Art Plus Ideas. It's a program that we have that's building on Taking Root, in that it combines programs that teach some kind of artistic skill with ideas about, sorry, I'm nervous. island, and discussions about our cultures, our environment, our diversity, our history. There's so much there that's rich that we can build on, and that's what we have planned going forward. We also have a program called Humanities on the Rocks, which will be community conversations about different timely topics. And we also have a program that we started earlier, it was called I Come From Here. It was about writing and creative writing and journalism, and building and fostering and strengthening a stronger sense of place. We have a fantastic oral history project that's coming up. It's called Guam Women Warriors, and it focuses on the women who have served or are serving in the military, and what their experiences have been and what their perspectives are. And we are putting up an online exhibit that we will be launching this fall. Those are in our plans going forward. So, thank you very much, and I will turn it over.
Thank you. And please, the left or right, not you, her? Ma'am.
Hello.
Just move it closer, you can move closer to you, don't worry.
Hafadee and Ralanim, thank you for this opportunity. Just to add to Bernice's remarks, I am also the program coordinator at Humanities Guam. I want to talk about our second program that's been supported by fiscal year 2018 TAF money, which is our longest-standing program called the Mother Read, Father Read, Family Literacy Program, that exists to assist in building a culture of literacy in our island community among the most vulnerable of residents, incarcerated men and women, single parents and teen mothers, individuals who are economically challenged, English-language learners, individuals with low educational attainment, and families at risk. HG has offered, since we started with this 2018 TAF money, two cycles, which runs for 10 weeks. And our goal for this year moving forward is incorporating and using more local literature and regional texts to inspire our participants to see themselves in the programs that we offer as a way to learn and enhance their education and essentially literacy skills, but at the same time, come to have dialogues across culture, across communities, about important topics that we share on this island. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask from any one of you in the panel, I know you talked about the program, and I know you talked about when you received the TAF, and I'm hoping that you could please delineate that and submit the programming and your presentation in writing, so that we can have something for our records written, if that's okay with you. That's one. Is that okay with you? That's one, is that okay with you guys? Yes, all we need is one from the Humanities Council, so that we can just have it archived and record it for this committee report. One, number two, is you talked about the TAF money that was utilized. So the last time you received the Tourist Attraction Fund resources was 2018 or 2019?
Please, oh, I'm so sorry. So we received appropriation from fiscal year 2018, and then we received a grant from the GBB for fiscal year 2019.
And how much was it for 2019?
$10,000.
So it was $10,000, okay. Mr. Chair, I just wanted to make sure that that was recorded for the record, because they did then receive something for fiscal year 2019, and some of the nonprofits did not. I just want to make sure of it for the record. And then the reporting requirements were provided to GBB as part of the law moving forward, right?
Yes.
You have that right. And if you can provide the committee with a copy of that. Chair, I know Humanities is the last one here. The Pacific War Museum, I was called by Mr. Martin Gerber, who represents his brother's namesake, Mr. Johnny Gerber, who was the initiator and founder of Pacific War Museum. And he asked for the support, he apologizes, he's not, and he had a family issue to work with. And they said that in any way that the legislature could help, support the Pacific War Museum, because since its inception, they continue to receive visitors on a daily basis. And as we celebrate our liberation again this year, they said they've been inundated and crowded with visitors coming in from off-island and even around the area. So they wanted to make sure that they represented that, and that was from Mr. Martin Gerber. For the Amat Tautautano, they too will submit something to the committee. Mrs. Nelson has been growing in that program as they continue to do indigenous plants and then plants as it relates to healing and all that. And on the Micronesian Cruise Association, Mr. Chair, I want to note for the record that though Mr. Paris, who is a member, is off-island right now and senses regrets, but of course, as you know, the administration, the Maga Haga of Guam had just recently signed an executive order promoting and advocating for the cruise industry within this region for Micronesia as Guam and the rest of our brothers and sisters in Micronesia as a part of the blue continent. And the resources that will be provided with them will truly facilitate the industry moving forward as we look for new opportunities for creating jobs, providing for our tourists and visitors to come, not via air transportation, but via sea and traveling, as it is one of the major industries around the world. The cruise industry had a market of billions of dollars, and we want to jump on the bandwagon and work on that industry, creating new opportunities for Guam, new jobs, and more importantly, for visitors to visit our island. So for both, for MCA, Amat Tautautano, and Pacific War Museum, I just want to note that for the record, sir, and provide reports for them.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. There being that there is no one else to testify on Bill 108 through 122, the committee will conclude the hearing on all 15 bills. Publicly heard, the public hearing, and it is right now. Testimony to the Committee on General Government Operations and Appropriation and Housing, submitted via email, senatorsjoessinagastin@gmail.com. Sidoos Masie for your attendance and participation in today's hearing. And for those at home, thank you for watching. The public hearing for the 15 bills is now adjourned, it is now 2:16. Thank you, good afternoon.